We'll now convene this November 21st meeting of the Centerville Town Council. We'll start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing with a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first up is agenda review. Members of the council, you've had the agenda for about a week. Do you have any additions or changes to the agenda as written?
None here.
Okay, we'll move on to review the minutes from a past meeting. We have minutes from the November 7th, 2024 meeting. Are there any changes?
I just had one on page two. It was under new business. This is the second bullet. There was just a repeating sentence there. Just duplicated and repeated.
Okay.
Yep, it'll be amended.
I guess that was for emphasis.
And we really mean it. All right, anything else? But if you do, you say it twice. Do you need anything? You good? All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will head into our citizens forum. Citizens are requested to keep their comments to three minutes. Are there any citizens that wish to address the council this evening? Okay. We will go into our appearances, and we have quite a few this evening. We're going to start with Jennifer Moore to talk about Heck With The Malls. Come on up.
Good evening. Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm here tonight on behalf of the Centerville Farmers Market requesting permission to utilize Lawyer's Row for the Heck With The Malls celebration, which is December 7th. To participate in the town activities for the past three years or so since COVID allowed us to reopen. We've been participating in this event. We will have it from approximately 8:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. to clean up. And we'll be open with the regular farmers market and craft show.
Awesome. So we just need a motion to allow the closure of Lawyer's Row. Okay, do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you need anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks for doing it. I'm excited. Okay, next up, we have Carol DiAgostino about Centerville Day.
All right, I'm gonna give you a little bit of everything.
Awesome.
So last night, our planning group, volunteer planning group from Centerville Day, we met at Mama Me's, had a little dinner, and we're talking about the event. This year's event went well. We finally had enough volunteers to do everything cleanly and not be totally exhausted at the end of the day. So logistics went very well. We had a great group of folks, but what we're seeing is that we've done such a great job that there's a ton of fall events happening throughout the town, which is great. So we want to take Centerville Day up another notch. So, you know, every event kind of goes through its its sequence and cycles. So we're looking at doing some more enhancements. Last night, we discussed maybe like a petting zoo as part of that, since kids like that kind of thing. And of course, my mind goes to health department, food, but you know, I'm boring. So we'll look into that. Also, I was talking to Mr. Martinez over at Wy River Upper School. I'd love to do a maker space event at Centerville Day because I think that would help bring in older children as well. I mean, I love like the thought of a Lego competition or some sort of more structured making, so.
The library, the mobile library also has like 3D printer capability, I think. And I just know this because of my real job, but Boys and Girls Clubs has a mobile club here in the county now that they take to Sellersville. And it's got, I don't know, like STEM stuff on it. So there's options too, if Wy River Upper School can do it.
Yep. The library did their STEM takeaway kits this year, but we want to kind of keep this event always forward-looking, so we're looking into that now. The other thing that we may have to plan on is we may need to move it next year because depending on what the renovations are going to be at the historic courthouse. What I was told was by April, there'll be a renovation schedule, but the plan would be that it would be snow fenced from the Queen Anne's side closest to the front of the building all the way in the back. So that would eliminate the kids' zone. So we would have a hard time fitting everything on the two streets. So I'm staying in touch with Lee Edgar to find out when he gets that schedule because if we do need to move it, I want to make that decision in the spring so that we can announce it and work it through. So I will do the best we can with the information that we have, but the group did discuss that last night too. So we'll see what happens. And I wanted to jump into our holiday fun thing, the word search. It's in your packets. I am getting calls from people. Like today, I got a call saying, I know you can't tell me any of the answers, but. So there's like, so which is the Circuit Court building and which is the, and can I get back issues of the circular so I can look to find those? So they're having fun with it, which is great. I know they love the word search. And I was trying to find something that would work with our businesses so it's not something that's heavy for them during the time which we hope it'll be busy for them and something that the residents enjoy. So this looks like this is doing well. We are halfway through our videography for this. So the businesses, the buy-in was a $25 gift card or merchandise valued at $25, but what they get is a one-hour professional videography session, professionally edited, three-minute video, and all the beer roll that we shoot so that they have that to use for their own advertising. And it's going well. We're trying to provide the tools again for them to enhance their marketing. So this is part of the grant, the Main Street Improvement Grant. So it seems to be working so far. We're going to put some metrics in it and measure it. But the businesses thought it was like the coolest thing because it was kind of, you do business with people, not businesses. So we were trying to get some factoids about either the business owner or the business. So it's working well. And I hear we have a request about 102 North Commerce Street. I'm getting stopped in church, so I figured my minds will give a report on that too. So the point at which we are right now is we're still waiting on signed architectural drawings. So they had their permit for the demolition, so they were at their next step. At this point, the, apparently the timeline for architectural drawings is like five months now. So they're expecting to get those in, they said, December, so it shouldn't be too long right now. Through the state, all the paperwork that's needed for us to request that money as alum sum has been completed as of last week. So as soon as we get those signed architectural drawings, we can get them started and get their proper permits. And everyone is anxious to see those workers back, so. And that's all I have unless anyone has any questions. No? All right.
Thanks for all you're doing.
I'm sure.
And I agree, this word search is cool. All right, next up, we have the Commission for the 250th Birthday of Our Country's request.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I have Jessica Fleetwood with me. Not as, not yet as a member of the commission, however, she's my star person. First house, first historic house that we've got the full property from Elizabeth Nicholson all the way through to her.
Very cool.
With all of the stories because that's one of the most historic properties, which is known as the Tavern House. And several people from various times were important in town history. One woman was very important in terms of Maryland history because she was one of the first to try to get a divorce. Because a member of the town, I guess he was sort of the town policeman, but not really. And he got a little drunk during the first year he was employed by the town. So he got fired, but he must have been a significant drunkard because that was part of the problem of the divorce. But the biggest thing is that you couldn't just go to court to get a divorce. Divorces for women, I don't know about the men if they wanted to get divorced. But divorces for women had to be approved by the state legislature. And it had to be presented to everybody in the state legislature. It took her three years to do that. So I just want to tell you that we're hoping, with your permission, to apply for a grant for $4,000. The town does not have to pay any money itself, but all of our volunteer hours, and because we have so many, we actually take up the full 4,000 even just in the hours.
For the match, you mean?
To match.
Very cool, okay.
But in addition, out of that 4,000, we also are going to make at least two trips to Jefferson Patterson Museum and Park because that is where all of our indigenous artifacts are being held. If you remember, when the state came and used that big property down at the bottom, the entrance to the town, that whole property where Langrell was a factory there, that property was full of artifacts. And all of that was taken up by state archaeology. And it's now being looked at, hopefully, and discussed and written about. We are the only one in the state with indigenous heritage who has no information online. Not just Centerville, I'm talking about Queen Anne's County doesn't have the papers. Everybody else has. So the whole project, I will call your attention, who we were before we became who we are. And to do that, it means going property by property. We're way into that at this point. To the effect that we've already started talking with Food Lion because they are interested at our suggestion to put up a history sign at Food Lion at the entrance. I'll say it again, I keep talking about it, the yellow line before you, you have to cross over that to walk in the door at Food Lion. That yellow line is the long, in back far side of the racecourse for the horse racing. And I'm in hopes that at some point, we can match the tourism on one weekend at that racecourse at a time when there was no bridge, only the ferryboat. 60,000 visitors on one weekend for one spectacular, famous horse. And this is a buggy, or some buggy race. But we had actually a national winner here. So the result is that what will happen is that every single property that has historic potential will do a poster or some kind of presentation on their property in their windows or in front of their house, whatever. And there will be a flag. And this will be promoted on every history weekend, which you know we do once a month. So that gives us big reasons. Then we can highlight different places and so forth. But when you see what, even right here in this town square, what those buildings up and down Commerce Street actually were. It's super, super wonderful businesses, far more than we have now today.
Yeah.
That's important. I just want to make one point that all of our historic properties and businesses, it's not about the building. It's about the people and the stories and what they brought, not just to making Centerville, but what they brought to Maryland and to America in the first 250 years. And that is what we're going to be judged on in terms of how much money we will be allowed out of that 4,000. So I will answer any questions you have, but.
So the, for the grant, the town has to apply, right?
Yes.
That's what the request is? Okay.
Okay.
Are we going to write it?
No, we, Gay and I will, we will write it.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, it's gotta, we have to put in the history.
Right, no, totally. Obviously, we would need your assistance, but town staff's going to support the writing of it.
Right, it'll be, we have a grant writer, so it would be with, with our grant writer.
Okay. And then the, the town will manage the grant for the use of the commission? Okay.
It's, what, the money is going to go primarily, I mean seriously, when you go back over that full list of everything I gave you that we're going to be doing, just to pull all of that together and get it in on paper enough that we can make use of it to do all of the posters and all of the other things that we want to do. I assure you, we're talking about thousands and thousands of pieces of just plain copy paper.
Oh, gosh.
But it's a lot. And then some printers, a couple of printers. Because I don't want to use the town's ink and copier to be doing stuff, so.
Yeah, I think for us, like for me, at least, my opinion, as a matter of course, if the town's applying for a grant as the town, then we should manage the funds for their use. So not that, not like a level of control over it, whatever the grant says will do. The grant says printers, we'll get printers, but you know what I mean?
The money comes to the town. It doesn't, doesn't come.
We're all on the same page, I think. All right, so we just need to give the town staff permission to seek this grant with Mary Margaret. So do we have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Hey, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And now, you having said yes, I need to, I need to tell you, we'll be coming back for more.
Oh, yes, of course.
Well, yeah, we didn't, we didn't think anything different.
We're going to have to pay for the flags. I mean, there's a lot of stuff coming down the pipe that we're going to need money for.
We all want to see this be successful.
We can hopefully get all together.
I really appreciate all you're doing, and I think we all, we all do so much. Thank you so much. Okay, Jamie Johnson, you're up. Really glad to have a Johnson family slide deck back, back in business.
What slides?
We know.
Oh, yeah, we know.
Well, I'm Jamie Johnson. I'm from the Holiday Committee, from the festivities and beautification team. We can flip this slide. We have five proposed projects this year, and I have a total budget here to go over. We can do the next slide. The first project is the visits with Santa. It'll be December 7th, 14th, and 21st from noon to 2:00. The flyer on the side is the flyer from last year. So we need to borrow the Santa house for those Saturdays. It was a big hit last year, so we're hoping that it goes well this year again. And then you can flip the slide again. And then project two is the letters to Santa. We started accepting letters the night of the Christmas parade, and then we'll accept letters through the 23rd of December. And then a letter selected from, by Santa's little helper on, will be delivered on December 24th by Buddy the Elf. We'll take the winner a gift card. Last year, we had a brother and sister that won, and they shared the gift card because our letters were just so cute. So next slide. Project three is the house decorating committee, a house decorating contest. It will start December 1st and run through the 21st of December. The top 10 houses will be identified on Facebook through the various pages. And then on the 23rd, the winners for second and third place will be announced. And that's last year's flyer. And the registration, you will have to just email me at JamieJohnson798@yahoo.com. And let me know you want to be in, and the mic and you'll go take a look. So next slide. Project four is the store window decorating contest. This is new this year. But we want to do it the same amount of time as the house decorating from the 1st to the 21st. And the top five windows will be identified on December 22nd. And then the first, second, and third place winners will be announced the 23rd. And registration for that is also my email. Next slide. And then we don't have a slide for the fifth project, but the fifth project is a Toys for Tots. They would like to, last year, they borrowed the first floor of the Wharf Building to stage all their gifts and stuff. They didn't have drop-offs there, but they just staged it, did all their pickups and stuff there. And then we also helped them get a tent for the Legion because the parents that were coming to pick up toys were standing out in the cold. So last year, we got them a heated tent, and that's $1,000. So the budget is, for prizes, it's $450. Gift card for letters to Santa is $100. The gift cards for the house decorating contest is first prize is 100, second prize is 50, third prize is 25. And the gift card store windows is the same. And then the services would be Santa Claus, I have three different Santas, and it's $100 for each Santa, for each Saturday. And then we want to do something different this year. We want to promote on Facebook each one of the projects. I'm hoping we get a little more people coming this year. And then the rental of the equipment for Toys for Tots tent is $1,000. So our total is $2,150 that we're asking for.
Conversation up here? Questions? So I think from, I have, I have some thoughts. I think from my perspective, I think this is all great, and I love that there are volunteers that get together and want to do this. I also think the amount of money that we spend on like charitable giving sort of things is really limited. And when we have town events even that our town staff throw, we expect them to fundraise to cover stuff like prizes. We don't use necessarily taxpayer resources for that. So I, I'm personally opposed, I'm just going to be honest, to using town money for things like prizes and Facebook promotion. I am totally fine, again, this is just me, one, one person up here, with the, the Santa thing. And I guess fine with the tent at the Legion. I, if the Legion doesn't have another way to do that inside, and like I don't want people standing in the cold when they're coming to get. I feel like that to me feels purely in the lane of charitable, which I'm. I feel like that, to me, feels purely in the lane of charitable, which I'm a little more okay with. But I, I'm, that, that $850, I'm really not personally okay with, so I don't know if anybody else feels the same way, or if anybody wants to...
It was last year. I don't know if that makes a difference, but you guys...
Yeah, I probably loved it last year either.
What do we do last year?
I, Jamie just said we did all of this last year. I don't think it came before the council last year, though.
I don't remember all of this coming before.
I think it came out of a line in the budget for holidays, and...
Right, what do we have in that?
I would just be opposed. Yeah. Directly to vendors, yeah, I think that's just cleaner.
Yes.
Um, so any other thoughts?
I'm like, I'm with you. I'm, I'm fine with, I'm even fine with the gift cards and the rental of the tent and the Santa Claus, but the Facebook promotion, I'm not...
That would be totally fine. We don't have to...
Yeah. And, and really, $400 is a lot for Facebook.
Yeah.
I mean, we, you know, we do a train show at the Atlas, we spend like $250, and we...
I think the thought was to do $100 for each one, got to each one.
And you're just trying to draw on it from people in town, so it's not like a wide market. So you don't really need them a lot.
Carol, can I, can we use Centerville Main Street to promote some of these, like the Santa House particularly? I would want to see Centerville Main Street promote. I just think, I mean, while I sit where I stand, does somebody want to make a motion on what they want to pay for or not?
So can I ask, this is just from a reference point, Carol, were the, was this event promoted last year? Did you help?
We probably need you to come up to a microphone, gonna, oh, just stand there, he says.
This is good, I can do karaoke.
It's open mic night at the town council.
Okay, so typically what I do is I find their post, I share it on the Main Street page first, and then change it to my personal email, my personal profile, and then I share it to residents of Centerville, residents of the Eastern Shore, residents of Ken Island.
Yeah.
So I do the...
And that's the same thing that we can do. Yeah, and we can put it in Town Email Blast. So, I mean...
That's true.
It'd help at the marketing.
Gift cards to me, like, mostly because I work in the government grant space, gift cards are just like the reddest of red flags and government spending. Like, I, I like, love nothing less than I like to see purchasing gift cards with government money. That's just like my least favorite thing.
The only reason we say gift cards is because now, like, the, the house decorating contest and the store decorating contest, those things we could get, I can go out and get donations for, for restaurants and stuff, but I think we would need a gift card for the letters to Santa for the kids, because there's nothing in town that they would want a gift card to do.
I don't know that we have to pay kids to write a letter to Santa. That just feels like something they do, kind of for the, what you get at the end of that. Like the...
Well, it's, it's kind of like the Buddy the Elf coming, and it was a big hit last year, so...
I mean, I can see how some people would love it. I don't. That's just me. I mean, not to be like the Grinch or whatever, I just don't think we have to pay kids to write a letter to Santa.
I'll make a motion to fund Items B, Services, and E Events in the total of $1,300.
Do we have a second?
I'll second there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, anything else?
Yeah, that's it.
All right, thanks. Now we'll head into old business. We've got ordinance 12-2024 Site Plan Review Procedures, Councilmember Worth.
Okay, yeah. Let's see, this has been, was pretty much created by the Planning Commission, and what it does is allows the Planning Commission to do what they've always been doing, which is reviewing, I'm looking at sidewalks here, I don't want to look at that, that whatever site plan meets, that is presented, meets the standards required in the town ordinances, comp plan, and subdivision regulations, and other policies and regulations established by the town. It avoids, that a site would avoid adverse impacts on historical, cultural, or ecological significance, and that it would enhance the bicycle and transit accessibility and comply with the ADA requirements and not cause an increased traffic hazards. And, like I say, I guess this is scheduled for, this is scheduled for public hearing?
I think December 5th. Thank you. Did you hear me say December 2nd? I knew it was right.
Our next, yes, our next meeting. Okay.
Okay. Cool. All right. Next up, ordinance 11-2024 Sidewalks, and I know there's a lot of conversation to be had here, and we've received some letters in our email about the same, and I'm sure you've all received comments from the public, I know I have. Who wants to dive on in?
I'm good with Section 134-7, time limit for removal, the owners of any premise in the town of Centerville that has a sidewalk or footpath used by the public shall remove all snow and ice from said sidewalk within 24 hours following the cessation of the snowfall. That's the only section of this ordinance I'm good with.
Well, kind of ditto. I, I mean, we've had a lot of conversation about this up here, and I know there's been a lot of chatter on residents of Centerville too, and so if people are here or watching the meeting just because, like, they've seen what's going on, I do just want to say, like, we've talked about this at many meetings, and there's never been any sense, for me at least, I'm pretty decent at reading this group up here, that we like, loved this, and we're ready to pass it. And so, like, the idea on residents of Centerville that this was like screaming toward passage and you were all gonna have to fix your sidewalks is just patently false, if you ask me. So I have expressed even about the sidewalk in front of my house, that I had been told by a sidewalk company cannot be repaired without the removal of a tree. That would probably cost me about $15,000 to remove, and would absolutely change just the visual scape of my street also. So I'm, I'm with y'all. I don't want to be responsible for that sidewalk, and I don't. We have in the past had money in the budget to repair sidewalks, and the belief amongst, I think, all of us at the time was that residents were responsible. And so I will fully admit that I'm who said that money should come out of the budget. If the town's not responsible and residents are, we have this sidewalk fund that hadn't been used, and that there wasn't really a process through which we would decide if we were going to pay for your sidewalk. And like, what's that threshold? So my preference would be to treat it much like we do streets, and have DPW, like, go take a scan of the town, like, what's, and we've gotten complaints about some, and we know what some of them are. What are the sidewalks in disrepair that need repair? And tier those, and like...
From the worst-case scenario down to...
Yeah, and we'll get them done as we can, just like we do the streets, and like, we'll keep an eye on the situation. But I think we're not going to be able to fix them all at once, like, that's expensive, and let's be super clear, but we could prioritize this in the next budget. We could get this year a baseline of the situation. I don't, I don't want to be putting liens on people's houses, or we don't even have a full picture of the situation, but maybe, maybe some of you do love it, I don't know. Maybe not.
No, I think it should be included, you know, when we do a, a road repair, we should repair the streets, so we, we did that on, you know, Kidwell Avenue, Railroad Avenue, so...
And when we, when we do a complete reconstruction, we do typically do the sidewalk.
Except we didn't do Liberty and Commerce, but, you know, maybe we can get back to thinking about that one, but...
And we have, you know, there are other scenarios in town that we have heard about that are like, maybe extreme cases of, of hazard on the sidewalks...
Right.
...that we might want to consider, whether the street is next in line, maybe the sidewalk does need a temporary repair or some sort of repair. But until we decide whose responsibility it is, and until we send the staff out to kind of figure out what's what, like, we're all just sort of stabbing in the dark here.
I've been reading, I've been doing some investigation, and 90%, 90% of towns, it falls on the responsibility of the property owner for the sidewalk. Right. 90%. I went to Berlin. Berlin is comparable to us, it's a property owner's responsibility. I don't, I have a problem with somebody who's moved here, like the young lady that came in last time and spoke, she just moved here, and she's got to get a tree taken down to get her sidewalk fixed. That's what I have a problem with, because the town, the sidewalk just didn't happen overnight. They've been for several years, a lot of years been bad.
And they're meant to be a public amenity for public use.
Yes.
And, so I think, I, I also think we want frankly control over their repairs, so that it's done adequately. I mean, you and I went out to that one house...
Yes.
...that repaired it themselves.
Yep.
I mean, what they paid, like, all, everything about that situation was absolutely bananas. And so if the, if the town had been involved, like, it probably would have gone better both for that resident and for the street itself.
I just think we need to put an item back in the budget for sidewalks. I don't know what the amount is, but we, this is what we're fixing this year. We're going to go from the worst-case scenario to the least.
Yeah, so I think we need staff to kind of...
Yeah.
...commit to getting that information for us, and then when we do the budget, we need to also set a policy, so that it's not town staff dealing with residents that are like, I want my sidewalk fixed next. Like, we have to have a very clear policy, so people know what to expect.
Yeah.
And like, I, I also want to say, because I was asked in the elevator, like, who, who put this forward? And so I want, two things, two little pieces of knowledge. If, if something in the agenda says council president, that is not me the person, that is the seat of the role. I'm not the one. Typically, that means it's come from town staff. That does not mean an individual person, and that does not mean that the town staff has sat around thinking, in what ways can we just doom the residents today?
Yeah.
It's really meant to be like code cleanup. We would see this as code cleanup. We have always thought it was the responsibility of the residents. There have been a lot of complaints lately. We don't have money in our budget currently. It was, how can we fix this situation? Not because the town staff is like, it sounds super fun to us to field phone calls about putting liens on people's houses about sidewalks. Like, they definitely are not interested in that.
And how it all started, right, Jim, is the cleaning of the...
The snow.
...snow and ice off the sidewalk. That's how it started.
That's right.
And that was, was not to mean for them to fix their sidewalks, it was just to maintain their sidewalks when a, a snow event happened.
So can we get this down to a snow and ice place and look at it again?
134-7.
There's a couple things I think you should consider keeping.
Okay.
One is right-of-entry. And if you all are going to be repairing the sidewalks, then you need the right-of-entry language in there, because we don't have easements everywhere that there are sidewalks.
Right.
So I would suggest keeping that. And then the other thing you may want to consider is if the property owner causes damage to the sidewalk, they would still be responsible for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Somebody decides to like, jack the sidewalk out in front of their house, they have to put it back.
And you could still have town public works do the work, so that you keep the quality control, but the property owner would pay for it.
Reimburse. Yeah, okay.
Well, another thing I was wondering about was like, what about brick sidewalks? I mean, because they don't really meet the current standards. There, there are ways to install them.
Can't we repair what's there?
Well, there's certain...
Like, what just happened on Lawyer's Row?
Well, there's certain places in town where I don't think you really should have them, because they would be difficult to repair, taking out a tree.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not going to be specific about the location, but...
Well, I think, I think this...
It's within walking distance up here.
I think this can all be part of the conversation with Kim and team, when we're kind of triaging the situation, and I, I trust our public works staff to...
Right.
...make intelligent decisions.
Right, there's some places where you do want to keep it, and other places where I think it could go, so, right.
Yeah, I mean, just to, I mean, just to speak to, I think the sidewalks are important for the beautification of the town. I think if you have standardization, I think that's the right thing to do. I mean, I am, I do like brick sidewalks, I'll just say that, as far as it's a historic town. So again, I don't know where all the brick sidewalks are in town, but I think that is important as far as maintaining brick sidewalks, where they should be, and depending on where they are, and then, you know, repairing them in a manner that, you know, is good to, as far as the, the visi, the visibility of that, and the beautification of that brick sidewalk. So I think it's just something to discuss further as it relates to, you know, the sidewalks, which ones. But, but I do support in general what we're saying tonight, that, you know, I think it's just the maintenance for the town issue. And one thing I think too, I think we talked about it, is like, as for large developments, but again, they're outside the town, but for like, the annexation that we just did. So this is just about future and thinking about that, relating to that property, that would be in-town limits, though all the sidewalks and Providence Farm and all that. So we would continue to do that as far as maintaining that, or are there, as far as related to HOAs associated with large, you know, so I think maybe there could be something done from that perspective, because you could be doing a lot of sidewalks in the town, and the financing of those sidewalk repairs as it relates to new communities that come online over the next, you know, several years. That would be my only...
And can't that all be part of the public works agreement? Like, if a large development's built, because like, Symphony Village has responsibility for theirs, I think, but by design, it's not in the easement, it's...
Yeah, certainly some communities may decide to do that themselves. I'm not sure that the town forced that on them, or whether they chose to do that. Developers will be responsible for the initial construction, and there'll be even a maintenance bond for some period of time that they're required to, if there's, you know, concrete fails in that one year.
Right, because we have that in Providence Farm, where we have failing sidewalk in the areas where the street hasn't gone in yet.
So there will be that. If you want something more than that, then we would have to...
You know, it's just how that would play out, because of several years, and the construction is happening and damaged the sidewalk, you know.
Right. So I'm personally, like, struggling to wrap my head around what needs to stay and what needs to go here, could, like...
I, I think we're contemplating a material enough scope of change that it would require a different public hearing.
We should see it again, yeah.
What did we...
Okay, I just want to make sure we were all on the same page, that we weren't going to try to do this verbally.
And this isn't, we haven't scheduled...
We shouldn't and couldn't, because of the scale of the changes.
And we've not scheduled any public hearing for this or anything yet.
Okay. Thought we already had one. Maybe it was just public comment.
Oh, we did have a public hearing. I'm so sorry.
Last meeting. That's why I called in.
I'm so sorry.
Because I love sidewalks so much.
Brain, brain fog.
Yeah, I do too.
Sorry. You're right.
But we need to have another public hearing, because it is entirely different.
It's contemplated a revised version of this, so...
Sounds good.
...cleared down quite a bit. And can we also pursue tree rings in the subdivision ordinance?
Absolutely.
I thought there was something about tree rings now.
Is there?
We talked about those trees...
Mike told me there is.
Didn't we?
He's good.
We did it, right?
Excellent, okay, thank you.
So I think, yeah, I wish there was a tree ring in front of my house. Okay.
I wish there was no trees in front of your house.
I can't believe trees, though I can't believe, I mean, I'm sorry.
We're a tree city. And with that, our Tree City USA designation just shriveled up and died.
I, I rephrase that. I don't like trees being planted between sidewalk and curb and gutter, because that's exactly what happens.
Certainly not the oak, the mighty oak.
That's what happens when you're, what happened to your sidewalk, that is what happens when you plant.
Yes.
That's why Jim brought up the tree rings. Absolutely, the tree rings should be, that should be the first thing that...
Yes.
To maintain that tree over time.
So what we learned tonight is Jeff is the opposite of the Lorax.
Yes, no, I don't, I love trees, believe me, I got enough trees in my yard for eight houses.
I can't wait to see the minutes from this meeting.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But yes.
Clean that up a little, yeah.
Jeff hates trees, because he wants to argue.
I have a lot of trees in my yard. I don't like trees in between sidewalk and curb and gutter. That's where I don't like them.
Okay.
Plant it.
All right. Well, anything else on sidewalks or trees? Okay, awesome. Next up, new business, Providence at Centerville LLC, and Joe Stevens is here to talk about a letter he sent. Yeah, where, where are the trees gonna be? That's...
Pretty much all over the place.
Can I ask one question right quick? I'm sorry, excuse me, Joe.
Can I ask one question right quick? I'm sorry. Excuse me, Joe. Do we need to vote to kill that or is it just gonna die its own quiet death?
We're gonna do an amended.
Amended.
Yeah, we're gonna keep the ordinance under.
We're all right. We're all right. No problem. Fascinating discussion.
Good evening, Joe Stevens.
Good evening, Joe Stevens. Um, I represent Providence at Centerville LLC. Uh, the property that the council just voted favorably in September to annex. And, uh, and do initial zoning of the T N D. And, uh, the referendum period, the forty day referendum period has expired about, uh, three weeks ago or so. And so it's final. Um, I, and I assume the staff had sent it over to legislative services and everything's done. So the next step, um, as I discussed with you at the annexation proceedings and, and before, and I've had discussions with, uh, the town attorney, the town manager before this letter was sent. Is to request that the county amend the master water and sewer plan. And the request would be to designate the property, which has no planned service designation right now, cuz it wasn't in the town boundary, to an S three W three designation. That's a four to ten year planning period. Okay, so it falls in line or should fall in line with the expansion of utilities, the sewer plant and things like that. We would have to, if you file this application and the county commissioners approve this request, we would still have to go back to them to get an S two, S W two designation. Let's say three years from now as the planning progresses on, uh, Providence Farm and the sewer plant expansion progresses and so on. So that is the request. And also, at the same time, um, I've, I've included in the request that the town request the county commissioners, as required under the, um, local government article, approve the new zoning. The county commissioners of Queen Anne's County or any county when a property is annexed, um, if it is rezoned to something that is, uh, that allows uses substantially different than the uses of the underlying county zoning, which was agriculture, um, the, uh, county has the right to expressly approve that rezoning or development that's inconsistent with the former zoning for a period of five years. Um, so they can waive that and that's right in the statute. Um, and that's what we're asking them to do. We, we think that we'll get favorable reaction from the county. The planning commission of Queen Anne's County just sent a favorable recommendation on the new land use maps that Stacy had sent over to the county. And you got a letter to that effect, um, or, um, the planning commission did, this town planning commission did. So that would be the second request to go along with this. So that, what the county commissioners would say is, they'd say we, on the record, we expressly approved the, what the town did in terms of zoning at T N D. So those are the two things that are in this request. Um, lastly, I didn't have not included it in here yet cuz I'm reaching out to Todd Mon at the county to see how he wants to handle it. But at some point, I'm going to buy, uh, submit a letter to the commissioners, asking them to release the open space or enter an agreement to release the open space that Peter Schaefer put on there when he did the rolling bridge subdivision as part of the approval. Um, and there's provisions in the code that allow the county to do that. And as we've all spoken very publicly, um, uh, Bob Karen, the owner of the property, intends to a- agree to dedicate approximately ten acres to the county for this public service area right next to the, um, to the Y M C A so that they have more land for county, county facilities. So that's in the works. I'd probably be back to you in a month or so on that aspect of it, once this gets moving forward. What I'd like to do is get this in the, in, in, in the works. It would go to the county commissioners for a public hearing at their February cycle for master water and sewer plan amendment. They do it four times a year. So this would be in the February cycle. Um, they would have a public informational meeting two weeks before their master water and sewer plan hearing. So like, the second Tuesday in February would be the public informational meeting and I'll attend, obviously. And the, the, the fourth week in February would be the public hearing. It'd be great if someone from the town go to that as, or maybe even to vote. But that's a little ways away. I've drafted everything for you. It's been reviewed. I've provided it to Carolyn and to Sharon in a word document. So, um, I can do anything else that needs to be done, but we'd really like to get that application in. And I think we've set up a fee structure. With, so, um, my client's been paying, you know, consulting fees and attorney fees and things like that. I think there's a three hundred dollar filing fee and that can just go right onto their bill if that's okay, or I can walk a check over.
Pass it through the backyard.
Yeah. Pass it through my way. I, I can answer any questions you have, um, or, um, if you have questions for, for the town attorney or Carolyn.
So you're just looking for consensus from us for Carolyn to sign this?
Yes.
So I just had one question. Just, um, excuse me, to the, uh, the councils who are just trying to
Yes, no, 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 that's fine.
We haven't met yet. We will. Um, so the property W three, S three, can you speak a little bit about that? Cuz I think you said, then that will change later. Can you just talk a little bit about that?
So the county, the county has, the, the, the county controls the master water and sewer plan for the entire jurisdiction, including that area within the towns. Unless the town has adopted their own, which most towns don't. Um, it's kind of a record-keeping document. And, and, and it also gets, anything in it gets approved by the Maryland Department of Environment as well. So unless the county acts, they send it to the state. There's six categories of sewer and water designation that they have, all the way from an S six and actually no planned service, like if you go, you know, on the other side of Route three oh one, there's never gonna be planned sewer service out there or water service. All the way down to S one, which means they're being served right now. So where we're sitting is S one, um, Kent Island, you know, the corridor is S one. S, so the S three W three is used as a holding for the most part for those areas that have been designated for growth. So, you know, in this case, the Providence Farm, but there might be some others, like in Graysonville, there are some others that are served by the, or on the sewer line, the water line in Graysonville. But they're not developed yet and there's no development proposals. So that's a holding area. And what the town, what the county plan says is they anticipate service between three and ten years, four and ten years is what the plan says. But when, let's say we go through the planning process for Providence and we do, we, we, we get to a, a point where we're ready to submit a final subdivision plan for a portion of it or all of it. We will need to go to the next level, which means it's ready to be served, which is S two W two. It means it's a- almost all the planning's done. And then you don't get served till you're S one W, but you won't have to request that of the county. That's an automatic when your plaits get signed and the health department signs off on it, um, and your engineering plans are approved, it automatically moves to S one W. There will only be another hearing when we go from S three, if we get that, to S two, or W two, W three to W two. So I, I hope I didn't confuse you.
No, no, it's just a process to go through.
It is a process. It's, it's a step. Now, usually you have to take it sequentially, one at a time. But in the, the ordinance recognizes and the plan recognizes the municipalities, you know, in the annexed land, it's a completely different story. It's not, and, and it, it creates a, a, um, they call it a leapfrogging, which they allow under the plan. I've had, I've, I've, I've discussed this with Alan Quimby at length, so he knows it's coming. He's helped put the application together. He said, look, you don't need to, you know, provide me what your estimated flow is or any of that cuz it's only going to S three. That will come when we move to S two.
Okay. Do we need a vote or just consensus or what?
I think a motion and a vote would be helpful.
Okay. Does anyone have a motion to give Carolyn the authority to sign this letter?
Removed.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you, council. Have a great holiday.
How do you feel about trees? That's what we need to know.
Right, on Symphony, it's all, they do it all.
Thanks, Joe. All right. Next up, we have ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty four. This is the penalty section updates and kinda goes in tandem with resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty four about municipal infractions. I'm gonna probably ask the town attorney for some help here, but essentially Carolyn and I were looking at the schedule for municipal infractions and they weren't even in order. It was like class A then C then B. I, it was bizarre world and they, they, they made a very little sense, frankly, also. So this is intended to clean that up a little bit, to give our code enforcement officer a little bit more clarity, a lot more clarity, I guess, on what the fines are.
Oh, you're just moving, yeah, you're moving stuff around.
Yeah, moving stuff into an order that makes alphabetical sense in the law.
So wasn't anything new in your
Nothing new. There are a couple moves. Plastic bags is going from the hundred dollar start to the twenty dollar start.
Yeah, that was one of the other things is like, so we're having some, some plastic bag, and it's been almost a year, compliance issues.
Yeah.
But I, I don't even, every time a business hands out a bag, and boy are they doing it, it was like a hundred, like in a day, they could rack up thousands of dollars in fines. And that's also an enforcement issue, whereas like a twenty dollar fine, we could maybe do some less intense enforcement and get some compliance without just absolutely murdering our town businesses over bags. Although I would love for people to just comply with the law. That would be a cool start. Um, anything else on this?
I think there was two other things that changed categories. Cemetery and interments and disinterments and firearms went from the one hundred dollar to the five hundred dollar first.
Right, a plastic bag and a cemetery disinterment carried the same penalty. And while, I mean, hey, I guess depends where, what you're into.
The rest is just the reorganization.
And we have to have a public hearing on this, right? And we should not move the resolution until we move the ordinance.
Correct.
Is the public hearing at the next meeting or is it gonna be later?
It'll probably be the one after that.
Probably. Maybe in January.
Maybe in January if you don't have the second.
Yeah, well, let's maybe not have public hearings added either way. Okay. The week before Christmas. Who doesn't wanna be here?
Second meeting is, was, uh,
We eliminated it already. Oh, yeah, we passed it all already.
There we go.
Cool.
Be January.
January meeting. Cool. Okay.
I have a question, if I may.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to have a non-ordinance document list all the town's fees for everything? And each time we pass an ordinance, it refers to that so that we could review the fees without having public hearings. It could be in the budget process where annually we look at this two or three page thing that's got all the fees. Yeah, we like these. No, we wanna change that. The ordinance still refers to the enforcement, just not the dollar value of it.
So that's done by resolution or something?
Right.
That's kind of what we do. And you also have a schedule of fees that has several of the other fees.
But what you're doing here is we have an ordinance and a public hearing to change the fees.
Well, we're changing the categories, not the amounts. The resolution is setting the amount. From now on, you would just be able to, if you wanna change an amount, just change by resolution. It's only if you're changing categories where it actually is a code amendment that requires the ordinance.
Yeah, we're cleaning it up because it was something like A was the twenty dollars and B was the five hundred and C was the one hundred, like, just in it.
The, the twenty dollar was added later, so it was like further down and the other ones had already existed.
Yeah, it was like a hundred, five hundred, twenty. The order was not
It didn't make sense.
The way math works.
In our code, currently, basically all the fines, everything says max of a thousand, so we don't go above a thousand on any unless we were to change that at some point.
Well, that's maximum is in the state law.
Is that state law?
I was gonna ask.
Okay. Anything else on this? Okay. Next up, we have wastewater treatment plant office and lab renovations. Vice President Keel.
I think Kip, Kip is way up too.
I thought we were just gonna let
I'm just gonna
Him figure it out for himself.
Just a pretty face. I figured it out.
Okay, uh, we, the town got a grant through the Queen Anne's County Maryland Rural Economic Development Grant Fund. We have two hundred dollars in this grant, um, two
It's, it's getting late.
Two hundred thousand dollars, uh, in this grant that we have to spend it for June thirtieth, uh, this coming year. Going over the list of projects and stuff that we have to do and everything, uh, this was one that was gonna be included in the, the wastewater treatment plant upgrade anyway. But we could pretty much fit that with this grant and, uh, get that job done before the deadline money spent. Anyhow, when we went through with our engineer for the plan for the wastewater treatment plant lab and office, the engineering budget was like a million dollars for this building. And it's not a big building by any means. So, uh, we kinda went back and talked it over and we said we thought we could get a better price on it if we went ahead and, uh, got pricing to see what actual numbers are. Uh, we worked with Gordian, which is a division off of, uh, Sourcewell that accumulates all these jobs that have already been bid out. They've met the procurement process and everything. And they actually found that this one fit best through Maryland General Services, uh, where the state has already bid out these things for the whole, the whole, everything you need in this construction project. It's all listed out. So they were able to get us numbers back pretty quickly. We got them, uh, the actual numbers through them came out to two hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred seventy-two, which is much better than the engineer's estimate, but, but we're, uh, we're still at ninety-six, five seventy-two over what we had in this grant. What we're asking for tonight is if we can take that, uh, money from the interest earned off of the ARPA funding that we have and Carolyn, uh,
Call me Carolyn, it's fine.
You can be me.
Karen, my sidekick here can throw you on, on, out on the funding.
So as we were using, um, interest funds over the last couple years to pay things down, we never touched the ARPA interest funds. Um, the ARPA interest funds are not regulated like the ARPA funds. Those funds are ours to use at our discretion. As of now, we've earned, uh, over five hundred thousand in interest in that fund. And so I thought this would be the perfect thing to use for the ninety-six, five seventy-two. We could still cover it within there. Um, we still wanted to keep them aside of that interest just based on the expansion of the holding bond and where that may come in, but this, um, I think we can cover it within that.
Right.
Has that five hundred thousand dollars been showing up in our accounting system going to the general fund?
It is in our, um, ARPA. I have a separate account that I keep the ARPA funds. And then once the completion of all projects, I'll transfer the funds from ARPA to reimburse general for its piece and enterprise for its piece. So right now it's in its own account. I'm tracking it separately. And I'll reimburse general and enterprise fund at the end of completion of
And that will be, um, a non-recurring revenue that we would show as an exception, a one, one-time event. So we don't drink the Kool-Aid and decide, hey, we got this money to spend every year from now on.
Absolutely. Yep.
Got it. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the Gordian quote for the wastewater treatment plan lab slash building upgrade at a cost not to exceed two hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars and five cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, reports of boards and commissions, Maryland Municipal League.
Nothing significant to report this evening.
Council of Governments.
I wasn't here. Carolyn went for me.
Yeah, just a couple things to note, um, which I think maybe some of you already know. Um, the county's, um, public works department is updating their comprehensive water and sewer plan. So, um, Kip and I are, mainly Kip, are working on, um, some updates to the language as it relates to Centerville. Commissioner Jack Wilson, uh, mentioned that there is a bill going in this legislative session that would allow municipalities the ability to lower the speed limit on state roads within town limits. So I thought I wanted to
We're gonna testify and figure that out.
I wanted to, he mentioned that and I said, oh, I could write that down. So I wanted to make sure. I don't wanna take away from, um, if Dan is gonna talk about this in his roundtable, are you talking about your Festival of Trains?
Oh, you can do that.
Okay. So, um, December
I barely brought that up, but Council of Governments.
December seventh, yep, the county brought it up. December seventh and eighth and, uh, fourteenth and fifteenth, there'll be a Festival of Trains event at the old outlet mall area in, um, I don't know if that's still considered Queenstown.
Chester.
Yeah.
Yes.
Chester.
Okay, wow. Really nailing the geography of Queen Anne's County over here.
I know. And then, um, clerk of court Catherine Hager was also in attendance and reported a rise in property fraud. So she brought awareness to everyone on that and just be aware of that moving forward. Next meeting will be January eighth, um, and it will be hosted by Queen Anne's County and still at Mama Mia's. Okay, so.
What was the nature of property fraud?
So that is, um, that is when, it typically, what she reported was it typically happens to people who may have vacation homes or not a full time
Or where someone sells it.
Someone comes in and, yes, sells their property and, um, so, and it goes through
Yeah, there's a national huge rise in that.
Yes.
Where people like pose as the homeowner and hire a realtor and do all the things and then
So, and they're seeing a lot of it coming through the circuit, circuit board, so.
Okay, that was All right. Um, economic development, we really need to get our arms around that in the new year probably and, and get CETA seated and just really encourage anyone who's interested in serving on the Centerville Economic Development. I forgot what the A is. To send in your application for that. It's on the town website? Yeah? Okay. Park Advisory Board.
There hasn't been a meeting since the last, so.
Okay. Planning Commission.
We'll make up for that with the extra meetings the Planning Commission has every month. Okay, so last night, they, um, reviewed the site plan for the, um, Hillside, um, Liquors. That would, it's proposed, um, like millstream and it, um, uh, kinda down the hill from where Hillside is now. There were a lot of questions and concerns about the project and also, um, there was some information that was not provided. So they tabled the, um, site plan review until the next meeting. Because of the length of that, um, part, part, they spent a very little time on Because of the length of that, um, part, part, they spent a very little time on the, um, revision to the Plan Unit Development Code, which, um, you know, the important part of why we have a, probably in a moratorium to work on that part. Briefly, they looked at, um, the way the county did it for one, um, neighborhood development that now has been taken out of their code. But, um, it's based on, it's a form-based code and also involves transacts. It's a different way of looking at zoning. So the Planning Commission's nerves are gonna do their homework and talk about it at their next, um, work session, which will be December fourth and then they will have a regular meeting, um, on the eighteenth, so.
Okay. Um, several of us were there last night, four of us were there last night. Can we talk about the whole trail thing before it's formally in front of us and we're aware of it? So part of the Hillside Liquors proposal, which, you know, we talked about the facade of the building and some of those challenges at that project at our last meeting. Um, another part of the project is the trail easement and one of the reasons, and there is an existing trail easement in a public works agreement from two thousand nine, right? One of the reasons that the Planning Commission declined to move forward on final site plan approval is that they felt like when it then comes to us due to the trail easement, it was probably going to get kicked back to them. So why do this twice sort of thing, which I, um, I agree with them, I wouldn't wanna do some twice either. The, um, applicant's attorney, uh, from my perspective, was disingenuous at best about the trail easement and the status of it. So I wish we had the map in front of us, but four of us were there last night, so a lot of us have seen it.
Or we missed it.
It's okay, you're okay, you know, it's like one extra meeting, it's quite an adventure. So the trail easement used to go from the corner kinda by the mill stream bridge and then up that side of the property. And then state highway.
Followed mill stream, basically.
Followed the mill stream.
Right.
State highway, and yes, it's a legal taking, but I just kind of disagree with the way the attorney presented it as if the property owner had lost something and not that they were reimbursed handsomely by state highway for this tiny little corner of their property being taken, that's like a choice, right? So state highway took the corner of the property for the bridge construction and so kinda like chopped off the edge of the trail, what could be the trail. And so the applicant is saying, well, we think the town council should either get rid of the easement or move the easement and use the term that it was nullified, which I patently disagree, based on it now being landlocked. Well, it's only landlocked by us. It's landlocked by the property that we have taken steps to purchase from state highway. So we could access the trail from the back, like we don't need two thirteen access to the easement. We got access at other points on the back. The proposal that they have for moving the trail is to just have it be the same as their driveway. So like what a beautiful trail that is, the exit lane for a liquor store, just what I always wanted. And it would now, there would be a building separating that trail from the mill stream. Oh, a six thousand, well, twelve thousand square foot building with a six thousand square foot liquor store in the downstairs. So it's super stunning. We've had before, the previ- a previous council, and I don't remember what configuration of us was up here, a request from an HOA to remove a trail easement that we have on HOA-owned property that was causing them a bit of a financial hardship. And we didn't do it. And a lot of the discussion we had at the time was that when we have an easement that is meant to advance the public good, we have to weigh the public benefit of letting it go. I'm disinclined to think the public good is better served by a massive liquor store than it is a trail. And so over and over and over again, in front of the Planning Commission, the attorney and the engineer were saying things like, well, because of state highway's taking, it's impractical to have open space on this property. It's now impractical to have certain things the Planning Commission was saying they wanted. Well, so maybe it's impractical to build this business on that property. And, uh, you know, I had talked to some planning commissioners that had reached out to me and they were concerned about a property rights argument. Well, the applicant doesn't own the property, so they have no, they have no property rights. And quite frankly, the current owner sold theirs to state highway. So if the sale of that corner to state highway makes it impractical to use that property for a commercial use, then it makes it impractical to use that property for a commercial use. And so I personally am disinclined to do anything to alter the trail as it currently sits in the public works agreement. And if that means they can't build a liquor store, then they can't build a liquor store. I just, I don't think that project serves the public good in such a way that this town should bend over backwards for it. And also, quite frankly, the building is ugly. And so the entrance of our town to have this hideous industrial-looking, a member of the Planning Commission last night said it looks like a prison and I'm inclined to agree. The public good's not served by us just making sure that we put everything in place to get this thing built the way they want it. And, and I truly hope the attorney for the applicant is watching this meeting. The attitude and the way that he addressed our planning commissioners was unprofessional, disrespectful, childish, I would even say, and like I have a bad tone all the time, including right now. So I try not to tone police people, just as a rule. But if I were the attorney for a developer and I've been a lobbyist for a developer and I am an attorney, if I were that applicant and my attorney sat like this and talked to planning commissioners like they were idiots, I would fire him. And so when they come in front of us for the trail, I certainly hope he picks a new attitude because I will not be anywhere near as nice as Kara. But that's how I feel about Hillside Liquors, I hope it doesn't happen and I wanna see a trail run right where it is. And also for the record, we do not have a town engineer, which they also kept saying over and over and over again that the town engineer told them things. That's not a thing.
Right.
We were all there, so anything, anyone else?
No, I mean, I would agree as far as you summarize it very well. And again, the trail is something that's very valued by this town. It's one that they wanna increase, they wanna continue it, connect the communities. It's very important. Trails are extremely important in the development of community within a town. And this trail, exactly how you described it, you're going through a parking lot to then enjoy nature down the stream. It's like, it's totally wrong. I've never, I've never walked a trail where you're going through a commercial area like that. And really have to think about our trail because we value it a lot. I've been in a lot of meetings with the town council about the trails and creating trails for the community. So, I mean, I would, um, agree with you as it relates to this property with what's trying to be done with this property. Um, it doesn't seem appropriate for what they're trying to accomplish. And, um, I would agree as far as not, not moving the trail, I just don't think it should be accommodated relating to it.
Well, they, they also base it on what we are doing with the future piece of land that we have. So in other words, they say they wanna move it to the north side of the property until we do whatever the trail we are gonna do on our piece of land that we, uh, purchased through open space. And that's what they were basing it off to, they kept saying that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm still with Ashley, like we have a public work agreement that says we have a trail easement, we have a trail easement. I'm not, I'm not up to giving it up.
Right, we should talk to the state about, hey, what happened to our trail easement?
Yep.
You know, it's like, yeah, we didn't sell that.
And.
Right. They should do more third title search when you purchase property.
Probably wanting to show up.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just, I think it's fair to say, and we held the Carter Farm, we've held other projects' feet really to the fire about what we expect. We expect community buy-in, we expect just something different than this. I know I expect something different than what's proposed here. And I, and I think the Planning Commission are volunteers and man, they're dedicating a ton of time to all of this and have a ton of passion about it and had a lot of thoughtful comments and really good conversation last night that went on far longer than I was able to stay here. But I think we owe it to our town volunteers to expect applicants to be at a minimum professional, but to also have some respect for our community. And I think everything about this project shows absolutely zero respect for our community from the design to the assumptions about the trail easement to the attitude and on and on and on. And I've set up here many times that we need more rental housing units. The, the property is a liquor store with six apartments above it. I would love to see more apartments in town. There's nowhere for people who work here to live and I want to see more of that. But like on a property that it fits on would be preferred.
Well, there's a, there's another issue with that property in that the, um, the current comp plan says that it's not commercial property. It designated green space and there's a map, zoning map change that needs to be applied, which will come before us, you know, that would prevent that from happening. You know, we, it, it, the, the map change is to make it, you know, designated to be commercial in the comprehensive plan. But that's, and because of a previous council made it, made a zoning change to make that commercial when it was residential one. So there, it's a little messy to start with. They would, they would also need that map change to justify the zoning change which occurred.
And so was that?
So, yeah.
Every Planning Commission, right, motion, they say this is consistent with the comp plan. That's part of their charge.
And it wouldn't be, right.
So.
At this point.
This change in the comp plan or whatever the comp plan says, and a planning commissioner did mention this to me that they thought maybe it was a mistake, but regardless.
Right.
There were public hearings about it, this was included in what we published on the website. Like the owners and applicant related to this property had every opportunity to weigh in on our comp plan.
So the comp plan, the zoning map, when the, in twenty fifteen, when the property was rezoned, the zoning map never got up. So when the Planning Commission was working on the comp plan, they had an incorrect zoning map that designated this property something that it wasn't. And so that was where the mistake comes in and now they're correcting it to recognize that it has the commercial zone.
I just, I heard over and over last night that because of the taking by state highway, so many things are impractical now. And so maybe, maybe it being a commercial use is now impractical.
And what that could be.
And I, I hold the owners of the property to a bit of a higher standard too. Think anyone would, knowledge-based matters when you're entering a real estate transaction and the owners of the property certainly know how to handle themselves in a real estate transaction. And they negotiated with state highway for a number that was satisfactory to them. So I, if it makes the property impractical for commercial use, then.
They could have leased the property to the highway for that bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't do that, you know, so.
It also just felt to me like no attempt has been made by the applicant to cure any of this with state highway. Like, they're just a kind of expecting the Planning Commission to be like, yes, you can have it. And if it were a new business employing a ton of people, like if there was some public, public good argument for what would be served by this being built, then I could almost get there. But the relocation of a liquor store, like a hundred feet.
Right.
I'm just, I'm struggling with what, what public good is served by that. So what happens with it, like the Planning Commission has told them, we're not giving you site plan approval until you work out the trail with the, are they coming to the next meeting, what's the plan? Should we just send them a letter saying we have a consensus if we do or make them come in front of us or what should we do?
So if they're keeping the trail where it is, there's nothing to come before you.
But they wanna ask us not to.
Right, so if they wanna ask you not to, then they need to come before you. And I suspect, I mean, they realize, Planning Commission's pretty clear, they're not gonna consider it until they work out that issue.
Yeah, I mean, the Planning Commission gave them a couple of action items, like talking to state highway. I'd be very curious to see in writing from state highway if they actually believe that entrance is safe for tractor trailers.
I think they'll probably have to come to you even if they keep the trail where it is because state highway moved the stream and now the stream crosses trail easement. So it's not possible if what originally was approved, it would be within the stream. So they're gonna at least have to curve it around that. They could keep it generally in the same location and just make a little curve around that.
Yeah.
But that would still be a little bit of a change.
Okay. Well, sometimes applicants do some due diligence before they come to public meetings and they talk to us. But I doubt that's gonna happen there, so it'll be a fun meeting when they come.
They might just give up.
Anything else? Okay. Next up, I think we're on department heads, Town Manager.
Just a couple of quick things, um, staff met with critical, no, give me a second, Whisker River Conservancy, um, regarding the wastewater treatment plant last week. And it was a, it was a good conversation, um, just getting everyone back up to speed and where we are in the process. We, as everyone, I think, knows, Sandy may not know, um, we have a lobbyist that we work with each year. The lobbyist we were working with has moved on to another position, so, um, still with the same company, but a, a different lobbyist. Um, and her and I will be starting to meet weekly, um, in December. But she did send me a message that, um, MML reached out, or she actually reached out to MML to let them know that he was working with Centerville. And, um, MML is beginning this year, um, to have weekly calls with the lobby, all the lobbyists who are representing municipalities. So she'll be attending those weekly calls and then giving me a, a report from those. I'll pass that information to the council.
Could you flag this speed limit legislation for Ashley so that we crack it? Okay.
That's all I have.
The lobbyist we're assigned now is great and is the person at that firm that we actually sent the RFP two initially. So I think we'll be really happy.
It'll be interesting to see if the speed limit legislation also includes the right to, um, all traffic cameras on state highway for right now.
Yeah. Yeah, we definitely want. Are there any other department heads that you wanna have?
I believe, um, yep, Lieutenant Harris here.
Counsel, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I would like to introduce myself for yous that don't know me, I'm Lieutenant Chuck Harris, Central Police Department. I'm here behalf of Chief Hobbs. So in your packet, you will have the council report for October twenty twenty-four. You will have our criminal traffic enforcement complaints and incidents that the officers responded to in the month of October. There's also in the special assignment section, I would like to just go over some key points and things that we did in October. Lexicole training, that relates to the department's policies and procedures. Evidence purging, first Friday event, we had the award ceremony for the CPD personnel where the officers were given awards and acknowledged for their outstanding duties and assignments that they've conducted over the past few years. We also attended the Centerville Middle School Fall Festival, Centerville Day, Halloween Party Patrol. We got to attend the hundredth birthday celebration parade for Mr. Dan Pavler of Centerville. Congratulations to him. We also had the Queen Anne's County Drug Task Force meeting, commercial vehicle inspection training. And then the last thing you see would be PWID K nine officer. What that is in reference to is a possession with intent to distribute narcotics. K nine cash and Officer Henderson got to utilize K nine cash and on a call for service where approximately seventy wax folds of suspected fentanyl were seized from a vehicle. This has a street value of approximately a thousand dollars or more. So congratulations to them for getting those drugs off the road and out of the town center. So that's all I have for us for October. Do y'all have any questions or concerns for us or the police department?
Thank you.
Uh, yes, I do have some.
Yes, sir, of course you would.
K nine vehicle.
Yes, sir.
What's up D on that?
It is currently getting outfitted with all the lights and sirens and it will be done hopefully soon.
And how about the laptop for the deal?
I believe the chief is working on getting those outfitted as well.
And the speed trailer.
I have to save the rest of the questions for Chief Hobbs after this meeting.
Yeah, speed trailer, I'd be curious too.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we, uh, we asked when we talked about the grant we were kinda reworking. I don't think that we've, we've not heard back from the grantor from our request to change, change our, our original.
Okay.
Um, so we've not heard back, but that is, yes, they, Tanya is, Tanya is extremely diligent in reaching out to people we have not heard back from. And so we're just waiting for them before we spend that money.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jennifer? We're gonna let Jennifer ask a quick question. Yeah.
As you're hearing, he's given this great report. Every single Sunday from May to November, we coexist on Lawyer's Row with our lovely neighbors and they always make sure the streets are clear. This year in particular, all of the police officers have been super friendly, super attentive. I just wanna say thank you and will you please send that back to Chief and all of coworkers because we really appreciate it and since you were here and I read this, we're not on this list, but I want the town to know that they're there every single Sunday checking on things and driving by and they've been very tentative, so.
And, and for the council to know too, because you know, I spend my whole Sunday at the farmer's market typically. They, um, are also like just talking to the community and it's been a great opportunity to see some community policing. All right, Finance Officer. I know, it's like, what, scary a little bit.
All right, just two quick updates.
I will have a draft of the audit this weekend. So I'll be working this weekend to kind of review. I've already gave my statements and corrections. So I'll, I'm hoping to have that to you guys early next week. I have until Friday to get it through the state next week. So we're kind of rushing through some, not the process, the audit's good. But with the issues we have with the system, it kind of slowed us down a little bit. Last year, we had the audit statements in October. Not really happy that we've had to delay a little bit. But I just wanted to give you a heads up in case you were wondering why you hadn't seen it. Jim usually asks me, I know, like where it is.
I was just thinking, his Thanksgiving just got a lot more exciting because we have it the early part of next week.
So I will have that to y'all shortly. I just wanted them to get my comments updated, and it's going through their Q eight process. So I'll have that hopefully next week. And I just wanted to give you a quick update. The last two months, the Fed rate has dropped point two five percent twice. So we have went from our insured cash sweep accounts from five point three eight percent to four point eight eight percent. Still a great number. Looking to possibly try and see if we can lock in because the feds are supposed to meet again before the end of the year with a possible another quarter percent drop. So if we're able to lock in, fingers crossed, you know, waiting to see what they can negotiate with us to keep a, because I have a, a feeling that rates are gonna continue to.
Yeah.
Creep down over time. So right now, we're at four eight eight. So we're still earning a really good rate, but kind of locked.
Okay. Anyone else?
You have, you have anything?
Oh, you just love hanging here. Got it. Town attorney?
Good.
Town clerk?
Uh, the only thing I have is that the Christmas holiday parade finally has an emcee. So thank you.
Yeah, it does.
Thank you, Ashley Kaiser. She will be the emcee. And we're very excited about that.
I tried to get, if you're driving a fire trucker, it would have been you.
Very excited about that. And to any holiday parade participants that are listening, lineup numbers will be emailed on December third for the parade, but I will also send out an A blast Friday.
Awesome. Very excited for the holiday parade.
And December fourth is our. Yes, I'm sorry. December fourth is our Christmas tree lighting, six thirty at.
Awesome. You can head to that and then head to a Planning Commission work session. Just the night of your dreams.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Anything else, anything else from the town staff? I'm too tired tonight, guys. Okay. We're now into our second citizens forum. Citizens are requested to keep their comments to three minutes. Are there any citizens that wish to address the council this time? No? Okay. Council Roundtable, Council Vice President Keel.
Nothing.
Hey, Council Member Beecham.
Nothing.
Council Member where?
Uh, nothing here.
Council Member Huffer. Okay, I just have one thing. In addition to the tree lighting in the holiday parade, we will have the menorah light, the Hanukkah celebration on December twenty-eighth, which is the fourth night of Hanukkah, the Saturday of Hanukkah. Hanukkah starts on Christmas this year. And so mostly kid-focused event, the cantor from the temple that I belong to is gonna come sing some songs for kids. And we'll read a story about Hanukkah. And like, I, I think it'd be very fun, whether you are Jewish or not, to just come participate. It's a fun time to learn about Hanukkah and learn about some of your neighbors and the things that they celebrate. And if that's not enough, there will be jelly donuts there. So what more do you need? Sundown-ish, so five probably. Four thirty, I don't know when it's sundown.
That's the fourth date.
Yeah, December twenty-eighth. Should be a good time. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I agree.
Okay, we're adjourned.